I'll go ahead and call us to order and declare that we have a quorum of six members present. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions, either in this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than to take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. It's a great night this evening celebrating lots of high school students, and we get to be led in our pledges by high school students here from College Station High School and College View High School. I'd allow you, ask you guys to come forward and give us your name and lead us in our pledges. Jack?
Hello, I'm Jack Costinbader. I'm a sophomore at CSHS.
I'm Ashton Lawson, and I'm a sophomore at College View High School.
I'm Jensen McMurray. I am a senior at College Station High School.
I'm Catherine Riley, and I'm a junior at College View.
Can you guys speak into it? There we go.
Please rise for pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for Texas. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Now, if you would all join me in a moment of silence. You may be seated.
Okay, we can take a picture real quick. As I mentioned earlier, we've got a lot of folks to recognize this evening. Tremendous performance by our students in many measures, especially on the National Merit Scholarship qualifying exam, and we have the great pleasure of recognizing our National Merit semifinalists, our commended scholars, our National Merit Hispanic Recognition Program recipients. We're going to go out of order just a little bit. You may see some people with some uniforms on because it is the marching band showcase for College Station High School and A&amp;M Consolidated High School, which is happening, College Station High School briefly right after this, so we're going to have them go first. So to introduce all of our students that will be recognized tonight is Mr. Glenwinkle.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ely. Thirty-one students were recognized earlier this year for their academic success by the National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 1.6 million juniors from more than 22,000 high schools entered the 2020 scholarship program by taking the 2019 preliminary SAT, or the PSAT. Eleven CSISD students were named National Merit semifinalists in the 65th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. The 11 CSISD students are now in a pool of approximately 16,000 semifinalists nationwide and are competing for 7,500 National Merit Scholarships worth a total of approximately $31 million. The nationwide pool of semifinalists, which represents less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors, includes the highest-scoring entrance in the state. In addition to the semifinalists, 20 students received a letter of commendation from the National Merit Program or were recognized by the National Hispanic Recognition Program. Roughly 3,400 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise, and although they will not continue in the 2019 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 5% of the 1.6 million students who entered the competition. The College Board's National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies academically outstanding Hispanic and Latino high school students. Each year, this group honors approximately 5,000 of the highest-scoring students from over 25, sorry, 250,000 Hispanic and Latino juniors who take the PSAT. So when I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. National Merit semifinalist Abigail Perryman. National Merit Commended Scholar Arnav Banjuri. National Hispanic Recognition Program Angelina Baltazar. Are there any others that have to leave right now? I think that's it. You guys take off and good luck and play hard.
Drive safely.
The following are National Merit semifinalists. And now for our National Merit Commended Scholars. Philip Guian. Jay Hong Huang. Rachel Lee. Nicholas Makri. And Nicholas was also a, was also received the National Hispanic Recognition, so Nicholas won two. Ethan Pham. And the following received a National Hispanic Recognition. Natalia Cruz Vespa. Dr. Ely, President Harris, that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
I don't know who else is planning to stay for the continuing part of the meeting, but if you're planning to exit, now's a good time.
Great seeing you all.
Yeah, and congratulations to all of you. That really is outstanding. We're proud of you, and it's why, quite frankly, we do what we do up here, so thank you. As they're getting situated, I'd like to point out the artwork on the back wall. It's been provided by CSISD Head Start, A&amp;M Consolidated High School students, College Station High School students, and College View High School students. Take a moment to look at that art if you haven't already. It's really impressive. That takes us to the consent agenda, which would be items G, H3, J2, J3, J4, J5, and J6. Does anyone wish to remove any of the consent agenda items? And if not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the items as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. That takes us to item E1, receive report on continuing education credit.
Mr. Harris.
Do I need to read the whole thing?
Yes, you do.
You get to.
I have the opportunity to read this. Since 1986, the State Board of Education rule has required that a public announcement be made each year of the names of the board members who have completed the required continuing education hours and who are deficient. The annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member under State Board of Education rule. The presidential calls the minutes of the local board to reflect the information. Senate Bill 1566 passed in the 85th Legislative Session amended the TEC, Texas Education Code, Section 11.159. Section B changed the reporting board training hours from the last regular meeting of the calendar year to the meeting held before an election of trustees. The minutes must now reflect whether each trustee has met or is deficient in meeting the training required for the trustee as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment. Okay. All board members have exceeded their requirements. Is that okay? Do I need to read everybody's name and say they've?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All six of the College Station ISD trustees have exceeded the required hours of continuing education as of the first anniversary of the date of each board member's election or appointment to the College Station ISD Board of Trustees. I think that's all we have to do on that unless anyone has any questions or comments. It's just an information report we're required to read into the record.
I would love to make some comments.
Okay.
First of all, I would just like to say thank you to these board members here. Board service is, it takes a lot of time and a lot of dedication, and these people that you see sitting in front of you have been very committed to College Station ISD, our students and our families, and to the obligations that they have to serve. They regularly attend training, they go and do online training as needed, and they work to, we all work together as a team of eight in a great fashion, so I just want to say thank you for all that you do and for your obligations and for your training that you do to make yourself an even better board member. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you for those words. I know we're all happy to do it. Okay, item E2, board reports and announcements. Does anyone have any reports?
I will make a comment, though. Mike Martindale came to speak to one of my classes last week, and on a personal note, that was good, but I will say that my students, when they did a summary, his excitement, his leadership, his vision, and probably the thing that they walked away with is that he doesn't accept anything but excellence, and I think that proved that your team does a very well, good job. The excellence, I mean, they, he strives nothing for excellence, and I think he should be commended for his outreach in the community, and I'm setting example for the youth.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale.
I have a report, yes, thank you, Mr. Martindale. I have a report on the Education Foundation.
Okay.
I'd like to share. So as I, I think I talked about last month, the Education Foundation was able to fund Dinosaur George for all elementary schools campuses, and it's a traveling museum, and they are loving it, so I've been seeing some comments around that it has just been a huge hit and a great addition this year to all our elementary campuses. We also, the Education Foundation, has received 101 teacher grants, grant requests, I should say, and we are currently evaluating them to be awarded at the Grant Patrol on November 9th. Excited to report that it'll be up to 175,000 will be awarded this year, so very, very exciting, and I know the board, the Foundation Board, is working very hard at evaluating those grants at this point. The Education Foundation is also participating in the First Annual Brazos Valley Gives, a community day of giving on October 22nd, and thanks to our very own Michael Schaefer for his dollar-for-dollar match up to $3,000. So wanted everyone to be aware of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
DEIC met last week, and that is such a hard-working committee, y'all. We went over the progress that has been made since last year, and next month, we start talking about calendar so that that can get out for approval, you know, in the very near future.
Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Ely, superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Excuse me, October, we're obviously blowing and going here in October. I just want to talk about leadership CSISD. We had our first meeting in this room last Thursday. We've got over 30 participants who are signed up this year. I think it's the biggest group that we've had from the community. I just appreciate them and their willingness to come and learn about College Station ISD. We started off by talking a little bit about our history of the school district, how we have grown, especially over the last decade. We've added over 4,300 students, and how we go about growth and bonds and those types of things, and a little bit about how public schools are funded. We were able to take that group a little bit through some of the changes that have occurred via House Bill 3, so it was a good time, great questions on that and a number of other things, and we're really looking forward to this group getting on our campuses and seeing our kids and our programs. In fact, our group will be at A&amp;M Consolidated High School next month to see extracurriculars and fine arts offerings that we have for kids in CSISD, so that was, that was great. Some upcoming, some things that have taken place this month that I wanted everybody to be aware of. October 2nd was Custodian Appreciation Day in the state of Texas, and we have the most hard-working and outstanding custodial staff members in this school district, and we were blessed to have them and their leadership through Mr. Hall and as Executive Director of Facilities, John Hadley as a coordinator. Just appreciate the hard work that they do on behalf of our kids and keeping these facilities that we have, that the, that the community has entrusted us with in such great shape, so I appreciate them. Also, October is Principal's Month in Texas, and we have 19 tremendous principals, many that you see seated before you. They're usually the ones in the last two rows because they get here early and get the great seats in the back. We appreciate all of their leadership and what they do for this community. A principal position is a, is a difficult position. You're fiercely advocating for your kids and your staff, and you're having to navigate the direction of the district and the ever-changing focus from the state. To have a quality leader in that principal's chair is probably the most important lever for school improvement that you can have in the district. It's not the superintendent, it's, it's not any other people than those people who are leading our campuses on a day-to-day basis, and we are blessed to have so many tremendous people in this district, and I am blessed to be able to work with you on a daily basis of principals. Thank you for what you do for our kids. One last thing I wanted to mention for upcoming events is that day after tomorrow, the board will be meeting for a management oversight workshop in this room at 11:00 a.m. It'll go from 11:00 to 1:00, where Mr. Hall will talk to us about construction services. We'll take a deep dive into what we do for construction and how we bring great value, and that Construction Department brings great value to the school district in our community. So 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, October 17th, see you there. And that is my report.
This room, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Right carry, this room.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to Item M, Hearing of Citizens. Do we have any cards?
No.
Okay, so if anyone wants to speak, oh, okay. All right, that takes us to Item H1, receive report on CSISD Communications Department. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We do, six times a year, we do updates on various different programs and departments that we have in College Station ISD. We are pleased to, this month in October, hear from Chuck Glenwinkle, our Director for Communications, to talk about all of our communications efforts that we embark upon in this school district, and there are many, so we look forward to hearing Chuck's presentation on CSISD Communications. Mr. Glenwinkle.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Mr. Harris, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about what my office does on a day-to-day basis, and first of all, I want to just share a little bit about who we are. If you start at the bottom left of the screen down there, that is Courtney Dorn. She is our front desk receptionist here at the main office, and she, up for a lot of folks in the school district, they're the first person that she, that they meet, and she does a great job of welcoming them. She does a great job of owning questions when they are posed to her. She doesn't just pass people off. She finds the right person to talk to and has that person call them back. She's really good at customer service, and we're very fortunate to have her. If you move to the right up there is Atticus Burke Man. He is our communications specialist. He's in the back right now. We can all wave to Atticus, and he's got, working these cameras, live producing this board meeting as we speak. He is very technically savvy. I learned so much from him, and if you see the picture of me down there, that's about my technical ability right there. I'm kidding, I'm a little better than that, but what he knows and what I know is very well depicted in those two images right there. He's really sharp. People ask me, what, what do you do as a Director of Communications? And what I like to just basically sum it up for people is, we let the community, the staff, the students, and everybody know what's going on in the school district. That cartoon there is kind of funny, and I think communications is one of those things that, it's kind of like a deep snapper in a football game. You know, you, you don't really notice them when everything's going well, but the second they snap one over somebody's head late in the fourth quarter, everybody's upset, and it's the same thing with communications. When you're communicating well, you're, things just go along, and when you don't communicate well, that's when you hear about it. So how do we do what we do? One of the main things we do is media relations. We are the conduit between the local media outlets here in town. Chelsea over there, I work with her quite often. Bill was here earlier from WTAW, several reporters from KBTX and KAGS and other radio stations around town, and, you know, media relations really isn't rocket science. It's about, it's about being honest with people, it's about getting back to them quickly, and if you don't know the answer, tell them you don't know the answer, but you'll find the person that does and get them the right information. We also like to think of ourselves as our own news service. We post lots of information out there on our website, on our social media outlets. We've published more than 50 stories to our, to our website since January of this year, and that doesn't even count the smaller stories that we post to our social media accounts. Again, we produce all the content for our website and social media. Here's some social media statistics, about 8,500-plus Facebook followers, and if you look at the demographics of our Facebook folks, it's, it's parents. You can see right there, 81% are between the ages of 25 and 54, which is parent age. 80% of those are female, so there's that. And then Twitter, we have over 500,000. It's a little bit younger crowd, but again, mostly females, and one of the things I thought was interesting was 80% of them are homeowners. I don't know what that means necessarily, other than I thought it was interesting. So an example of a post there is the National Merit semifinalist that we did on Facebook. We reached over 5,500 people. We had 537 people react to that post. We had 44 comments, 11 people shared, and a lot of these posts that we share out, they kind of get organic and get spread around from our campus outlets and just people in the community spreading around the good news of our student success in College Station ISD. Interestingly enough, our posts that usually get the most traffic are the ones where we are delaying school or canceling school early, or those types of things. Those things like go Kardashian viral. We also, we also provide photo and video services for our campuses and our departments here within Central Office, and our videos run the gamut from the school board meetings that we're recording right now, to general stories, to instructional pieces on, you know, how parents can help use new software that we're rolling out, or those types of things. We spend a lot of, not a lot of time, but some time doing graphic design. We work a lot with our Human Resources Department on recruiting materials, and, and we help out other folks as well who, who need some sharper-looking materials. One of the things that we've had in place for quite a while now is School Messenger. It's a really powerful tool. Our campus principals have access, some of our other campus administrators have access to use it. Basically, what you can do is, I'll just use an emergency situation for an example. You can text, email, and call if you want to. We don't generally use the call feature that much anymore, but text and email every parent in the district within a matter of about 10 minutes, which is pretty fascinating if you think about it. We've probably got, you know, we've got almost 14,000 students. The last time I sent an email out to every parent in the district, it went, excuse me, it went to a little over 20, I want to say it was like 25,400 email addresses, so it's pretty good reach. We manage the back, the, what's it called? Background check portion of the volunteer program. So we used to do this manually, but, but for the last four or five years, we've integrated this into our Talent Ed system, which is our employee application software, and what we do here is people will apply to be a volunteer. It does a background check for them. If anybody comes back with a criminal background, we check it against our regulations for allowing those folks to volunteer in our schools, and we send lists every week to our campuses so they know who is on the approved volunteer list. The campuses and other departments manage their own volunteer opportunities on their campus. We just provide them with the list of the folks who actually are eligible to volunteer. We also managed the distribution of non-school material several years ago. We, from feedback we received from parents, we stopped sending flyers home that are not school-related in folders, just because we got a bunch of feedback from parents saying that we don't really know what is from the school and what's not from the school. There was so much stuff going home, so we created this online efolder, and all of our flyers from our community partners, our nonprofit community partners, go up there. There's also an approval process for hanging posters in the school. That goes through my office, as well as putting the yard signs out in the drive-thrus. That goes through my office as well. We want to kind of make sure, we're making sure the things that are out there are appropriate. We also have the fun task of responding to Public Information Act requests, and I could talk about that a long time, but I will not bore you with it. We get quite a few of those every year. Most of them are for employee directory information so people can solicit our employees. Real quickly, our challenges, and these first, these, these first, actually, all three of these are getting worse and worse as far as challenges goes. You know, the news cycle, it used to be you could, you got your news in the morning by reading the newspaper, or at 5:00 in the afternoon by watching the news, or 6:00, or 10:00 before you watch MASH, right? And... the afternoon by watching the news, or 6:00, or 10:00 before you watch MASH, right? And nobody got that one except you, Clark. Thank you. But now, the news cycle is like literally 24 hours. Everybody who has a cellphone has the ability to report news via Twitter or Facebook, or whatever it is, by texting your parent. How, it just gets out. It does. It goes quick. And a lot of times, the public knows about things before we do over here. And so that is a real challenge for us. Along with that, there are tons of resources out there. This is a crazy kind of graphic that shows all the different social media sites that are out there. And, and I don't even know how recent this is, but it's a lot. There's no way to monitor it all. There's no way to read everything. There's no way to see all the mentions of our school district, of our campuses, or all those types of things out there. So a lot of times, people will come and say, hey, did you see what, you know, this person was saying about Mr. Martindale? Like, no, I didn't see that at all. Where'd you see that? He's like, oh, I don't remember. It was on something I was reading. I'm just kidding. No one ever says anything about Mr. Martindale. But my point is, is someone can tell you that, and you could spend hours and hours trying to find it and not have any luck, because there are, there are so many things out there. The last one is a short attention span. That is a really difficult challenge, and I'll just let y'all read that for a second. And it's true. Messages nowadays, they have to be chock-full of information in a very short time, or you're not going to get your message across. The old journalism adage is, don't bury the lead. And so you want the most important parts of your message at the beginning, and you want to make sure your message is concise and clear. And a lot of times, that gets difficult when you have a lot of things to say, when you have the curse of knowledge. There are so many ideas in your head when you're putting together a communication, that it's sometimes difficult to boil them down to the points that are the most relevant and the most important, and are the ones that our, our parents and our students and our community need to know. And with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, I'll lead us off. I want to give you a personal thanks. Sitting in this chair, it's a little bit different, because the folks in the media want to, to come talk to the president. And thank you for, for helping me as I've been in this chair, and then those that went before me. And I, I really want to commend you on, on how you do the job. And I think you did a good job summing it up. And it's kind of what, what you told me, not the exact words, but just always tell the truth. Tell them what we're doing and why, and everything will be fine. Because we're not trying to hide anything. It's always there to see. And I've always tried to follow that advice every time I'm talking to one of them. So thank you for that. And I think it, it does a good job, or has a lot of benefits for the community to know that we're going to say it like it is, whether it's good or bad. Now, I think we're very fortunate in that the vast majority of our story here is incredibly positive, like we got to see tonight. I mean, the, the pinnacle of academic achievement. We have got a glimpse of the band. I'm going to guess they're going to do exceptionally well at their competition.
They will.
I've seen them perform on Friday nights. We watch, you know, all the successes we get to talk about in all the activities. It's a great story to tell. But even when it's not one of the great things, I think you do an exceptional job of communicating the reality of the situation to the community and through the media partners that, that you work with. So I want to extend that to you and say thank you.
Thank you.
Others?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I'd like to say something.
Okay. I'm gonna go sit down.
No, it'll be brief. I appreciate Mr. Glenwinkle and what he shared. And that first slide, when you saw that he's got three people, that, two others that he works with. And so they're able to do a tremendous amount on, on a lean staff. And I just appreciate Chuck and Attican and Courtney for what they do. And I, just kudos to Courtney, too. We talked about that a little bit. But she is the front, she's on the front door of the district. She's the first touch that people have College Station ISD. So I appreciate what she does, especially, you know, in sometimes some difficult situations when she has to answer the phone. But thanks to Chuck, thanks to Attican, thanks to Courtney for all that you do for us.
Okay, item H2, receive annual bilingual ESL program report. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. As it says there, this is our annual report. To talk to you about bilingual education, and English as a second language. We have with us Dr. Marla Ramirez to give us our 2019, 2020 annual report. Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Mr. Harris, members of the board.
Is that on?
Is it on?
Is the green light on?
Yes.
Okay.
Like Dr. Ely mentioned, I'm here to share with you our annual bilingual ESL program.
Oh, now it's a little brighter green. It was green, not so bright, though. So I'm here to share our annual bilingual ESL programs report with you. So I will be describing our program models, our program scope, our budget, staffing, goals, and activities for our program, and then some performance data. So first of all, our program models. We do have the bilingual dual-language program in our district. So we, the one-way dual-language is for our pre-K Head Start program. We have 90% of the instruction in that program is done in Spanish. And that program is growing. So just like the pre-K Head Start program is growing, or the pre-K classes are growing, this program has grown tremendously this year. So we're at five. We have the capacity, right now, the number of students to, to have five sections of this dual-language program. For K6, we have our two-way dual-language program, where half of the students are learning, or half of the time they learn in English, and half of the time they learn in Spanish. Half of the student enrollment are native English speakers, and half of the student enrollment are Spanish-native speakers. So that's our two-way dual-language program. Then in the ESL area, which, these are all the other students that are limited English proficient, but Spanish is not their native language, we offer two ESL programs. One of them is the content-based ESL, where all the core teachers are ESL-certified. And this is done in our pre-K through sixth grade classrooms. And all of our students are served by their content teachers. Then when we move into our secondary, our seventh through twelfth grade, we have what we call pull-out ESL. These students are served by an ESL-certified English teacher. So whichever teacher's giving them an English grade, that teacher has to be ESL-certified. So content-based or pull-out for ESL. So I am required to do a language survey of our district every year. And our survey this year has indicated that we have 59 reported languages in CSISD right now. So last year at this time, we had 61. This year, we have 59. From those students that report a language other than English, we have to identify how many of them are actually limited English proficient. So as of now, we have 1,217 students that are limited English proficient. So they are going to be, hopefully, if parents approve services, they will be served through either a bilingual program or an ESL program. Out of those 1,217 students, 789 have Spanish as a native language. So that's where our dual-language program has been growing, our two-way and one-way. So when I did the survey of languages, and we found out we had 59 languages, I have to look at it a little bit closer. And TA has put out the rule of 20. So what that means is that we have to look across the district at every individual grade level. And if any grade level has 20 or higher per grade of a specific language, and we have 20 or higher limited English proficient, then we have to provide a specialized language program for that language group that following school year. So this year, Mandarin had 20 in third grade and 20 in fifth grade, but only three in third grade were limited English proficient, and four in fifth grade were limited English proficient. So we're still below the 20 limited English proficient. But as you can tell, the numbers are creeping up on us on other languages as well. So Mandarin is a language we're watching, and Arabic is a language that we're watching, just to monitor how many students we have enrolled that are limited English proficient. So the bilingual ESL budget for this year has grown. So if you compare this year's budget to last year's budget, it has increased. And I'm happy to say that this was a very positive outcome of House Bill 3. They are funding ESL and bilingual at a higher rate. So we're super excited to see that. And for the first time, they have indicated that they are going to actually fund the English side of dual-language. They had never funded the English side of dual-language before. So that is where the increase has come in, and it's really, really needed, and we're super excited about that. So our staff right now, we have three bilingual certified reading specialists that are housed at our three dual-language campuses, one at each. We have 54 bilingual certified teachers in our district, 22 bilingual teaching assistants. Those are actually funded through our federal funds, through Title I and Title III. We have 16 ESL specialists that serve all 19 campuses. We actually have ESL at College View High School this year for the first time. We had never had a ESL student there, but we do. And we have 199 K through 6 ESL-certified classroom teachers. The majority of those teachers are in the elementary, or K through 6. And then we do have some at the secondary, which are mainly our English teachers at the secondary. So the goals for our program continue to be to ensure that all English learners do master the state curriculum. And we want to develop English proficiency for all the students in the program, whether they're ESL or bilingual, to also develop fluency and literacy in English and Spanish for our dual-language students. So we are responsible for literacy in both languages, and to develop an understanding and appreciation of other cultures. So those are our program goals. So the activities that we conduct every year is, we have to do the identification. So when a student enrolls and they indicate something other than English on their home language survey, we have four weeks to determine if that student is or isn't limited English. And that includes holidays. So if they enroll, you know, December 16th, those two weeks that we're out, they're, they're on, we're on the clock. So we have a very, very tight window, four-week period, to identify these students. This year, TA has changed our assessment instrument. So they have standardized this across the state of Texas. So thank goodness, beginning November 1st, it was originally beginning the first day of school. And then we got a memo from TA that we all cheered about, that they were going to give us a little bit of window to get our feet underneath us with the new assessment. So beginning November 1st, just a few weeks from now, we will be using the Pre-Loss Links to assess our pre-K and Kinder students. And that test is a paper, paper and pencil test that the teachers used to score. And we're going to use the Loss Links test for first through 12th graders. That is an online assessment. So all of our ESL staff is trained. We are going to continue to do a little bit more practice rounds before we actually start using that instrument November 1st. But that's a statewide change. The other assessments that we use for our limited English proficient students are our TellPass test and our STAR test. Along with our, with this, we have to constantly monitor our limited English proficient students. So that's ongoing. So every six weeks, every grading period, we're collecting data to see how our students are doing. And if, at any point, they're not making progress, we're taking them back to an LPAC, and we're talking about what kind of accommodations, or what can we do to better serve the student and help them make progress. And then the last thing we do is, every year, at the end of the year, we talk about reclassification of students. So any student who has met extra exit criteria, and it depends on their grade level, what the exit criteria is, then we take them to LPAC, and we will reclassify students to a monitor or exit status, depending on how they have performed throughout the year. ESL summer school. So this is a requirement for all of our current pre-K and kindergarten, kindergarten students that are limited English proficient, that will be kinder first grade next year. So we're required to provide summer school. So I wanted to share this with you, because as our program grows, as our pre-K program grows, those four-year-olds that are going to be kindergarten next year now qualify for that summer school. So our ESL summer school for June 2020 is going to look a little different. We're predicting it's going to be a little bit bigger. We have done some, just initial, let's see where we, where we are. This last June 2019, we served 220 students in our pre-K, in our ESL summer school. We're anticipating about 280 for June 2020. Not every student will accept the summer school, but on average, we're thinking the program will grow about 70 to 80 students this year. We are required to provide 120 hours of instruction. We provide breakfast and lunch to these students, and also transportation if the student lives more than two miles from the school where we will host summer school. So our performance data, this first piece of data is our TellPass composite for grades K through 2. So CSISD is the light blue, and TA, or Texas, the whole state of Texas, is a darker blue. If you can, if you notice our data, we had, of all the students in K2 that took TellPass last year, 15% of them were in beginning. And I just want to make sure, we want to be advanced and advanced-type. We want our students to be on those levels. But we did have 15% of our students performing at beginning, 34 intermediate, 35% were advanced, and 16% were advanced high. So our goal is that these kids, every year, move at least one performance level. And I'll share that data with you in a minute, where we ended up on that. In our third through 12th grade, we had 6% of our students performing beginning, 26 at intermediate, 50 of our students were at an advanced level, and then 18% were advanced high. In order to exit the limited English proficient, you do have, the students do have to perform advanced high. So now, out of all the students that were tested, we had 61% of our K2 students at least make one level progress. So they moved from one level to the other. And we had 31% of our third through 12th graders at least move one level. So that was what our TellPass data showed for this last year, for 2019. Now, in reading, our, this reading data is for our English learners that are not in a dual-language program. So these are just our ESL students. Out of our third graders, we had 70% of our third graders passed the reading star, 65% of fifth graders, and 60% of our eighth graders passed reading star. The bilingual students performed the third grade, 83% of our bilingual students passed reading star, and 84% of our fifth graders passed reading star. We don't have eighth grade, because we don't have dual-language or bilingual in eighth grade. It ends in sixth. Now, in math, we had, this is just our ESL students, not our dual-language students, 90% of our third graders passed math, 84% of our fifth graders, and 84% of our eighth And then for our bilingual students, we had 88% of our bilingual students passing math, and 89% of our fifth graders passing math. In our EOCs, these are all students who participated in an ESL program. 85% of those students passed algebra, 68% biology, and 61% with the US history. Our students have been struggling with that US history. Our ESL students do struggle with that course. And then in the English side, English I, we have 32% of our students passing the, for the English I, and 42% passing English II. No, that was kind of quick. Are there any questions or comments? Our ESL group is growing, and I think that's a trend across the state. We're not alone in that.
No, we're definitely not. Thank you very much for that. I tip my hat to the work you do. I live with, well, one now, but formerly two students that were primarily, I guess, native English speakers.
Primarily.
Primarily, yeah. It's hard enough to get them to learn English and the other subjects. For people who, it's not their native language, that's, that's impressive. Can you give us an idea of some of the things we're trying to do to target maybe that US history? That was the only thing that kind of jumped out at me.
Yes. We are concentrating on vocabulary development, so academic vocabulary. So we do have some professional development coming in to help students. Actually, they're coming in on January 6th to work on how to help students learn content vocabulary, because that's one of the biggest struggles. So that's a start right there for... So that's a start right there for, for that subject.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I'm just still amazed by the 59 languages. Mine boggles me.
Yeah.
And, and that's not even made-up ones, like Klingon or Pig Latin. Real things.
What are some of the, of the 59, like, I know, obviously, Spanish-speaking?
I thought you'd ask. So of course, Mandarin and Arabic. Oh my goodness. Vietnamese, Korean, Japanese, French, German, Cantonese, Greek, Farsi, and it goes on and on and on.
Right. Okay. But the next biggest population is the Mandarin and the Arabic?
Yes.
Our largest population?
Yes, and then Korean after that. Those are the ones that stand out. The others, we have maybe like three, four, two students per grade level.
And year over year, are we, what is it, you may not have this information ready at hand, but how have we grown with our ESL population?
We're steadily growing. I mean, I see about a 1% to 2% growth per year. It's not a huge drastic, drastic growth, but we are, we're maintaining about 9% of our students are, are limited English proficient.
Okay.
But we're right, we've hovered there, so we're staying in that 9% range.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did the opening of the charter school cause any kind of blip in that?
We did lose a few students, like, a few students did move, but a lot of them have actually come back. So we've had a transition there. But no, we did not see a huge hit, like, our numbers didn't drastically change. The reason I know they've come back, because we have to re-LPAC when they come back to us, and we ask, where were you last year? So that's how we know that they're coming back.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. That takes us to J1. Consider approval of purchase of laptop computers for Oakwood Intermediate School from AVANEX in the amount of $61,527 per National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract using Title I federal funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. Oakwood Intermediate School is looking to purchase additional laptops. Mr. Simak and his leadership on that campus is using targeted federal resources to be able to increase technology on his campus, and that's what we have before you with more details about this purchase, is Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely and Mr. Harris. We are requesting approval of purchase of 90-student laptop computers and three charging carts, again, for Oakwood Intermediate. The attached quote from AVANEX was secured through our National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, COOP. And again, the cost for this purchase would be $61,527, and we are, we would be utilizing Title I federal monies for this purchase, since Oakwood is a Title I campus.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on this matter, but does anyone have comments?
I make the motion that we approve the purchase of Hewlett-Packard laptop computers and charging carts for Oakwood Intermediate School from AVANEX in the amount of $61,527 as presented using Title I federal funds.
I'll second that motion. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0 with one abstention. That takes us to L1. The board will meet in executive session to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, because the deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the district in negotiations with a third party. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the deliberations regarding real property closed-meeting exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.0742 of the Texas Government Code. So with that, the board will retire to executive session.
And Mr. President, I'd like to abstain from discussions, and I will be leaving the building for the evening.
Okay. Based on some things that came to light at our last executive session, I will be doing the same thing. I'm going to abstain, and I'm going to let the, the board handle it. And so if there is any action to be taken, it will be taken under M1, under the open session, and the vice president will lead that vote, and then we'll adjourn the meeting as appropriate. So with that, we will retire to executive session.
It is 8:24, and we are back in session, which we will be at M1, item M1. Consideration and possible action with respect to a resolution for the approval of the assignment and assumption of a contract to purchase approximately 41.40 acres of real property located at 2441 Arrington Road, College Station, Texas. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent, members of the board. It'd be the administration's recommendation that we move forward with the assumption of the contract and moving on towards the closing for the 41.4 acres of real property located at 2441 Arrington Road. That would be our recommendation.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I move that we go forward with the assignment of contract as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So we have a, a vote of 4 to 0. Is it with two abstentions? With two abstentions. That's all? Oh, I get to, I get to do the gavel. And we are adjourned.